Okay, at six o'clock, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ms. Deese, would you determine a quorum, please, for me? Take the roll.
We'll just start over to your left and state your name for the record.
Joe Litch.
Meg Fielding.
Sidney Sandy.
Ken Curtis.
Dave Patagemas.
Thank you. We do have a quorum. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. The first order of business is the swearing in of our new planning board members. So I'd like to start with Ken, please. Ken Curtis?
Sure.
All right. You can place your right hand on the Bible. This is not going to work. Right hand, left hand up.
Right hand on the Bible, left hand up.
Repeat after me, please.
Yeah, I can't hold that microphone out and do that all the time. I get it.
I, Ken Curtis.
So I, Ken Curtis.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And law of the United States of America.
And law of the United States of America.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
Constitution of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my office as a member of Indian Trail Planning Board.
Of my office as a member of the Indian Trail Planning Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And David, would you be next? Right hand on the Bible?
Yep.
I, David Patagemas.
I, David Patagemas.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And law of the United States of America.
And law of the United States of America.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of my office.
Discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Indian Trail Planning Board.
As a member of the Indian Trail Planning Board.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay. Congratulations to our new planning board members. Thank you for your service. Our next order of business is to approve the minutes of the previous meeting, which was November 21st, 2023. Were there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that the minutes be accepted.
May I make a motion that the minutes be accepted as written?
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. New business, ZM 2023-0151 Gribble Road.
That will be me.
Your run.
Good evening, planning board. My name is Tyler Hioski. I'm one of the senior planners here with the town of Indian Trail. Presented before you is ZM 2023-0151 Gribble Road. It's going through a conventional rezoning, also called a zoning map amendment. To rezone one parcel to downtown transitional residential district. We call that DTDR. The parcel is located on Gribble Road between Navajo Trail and the future Chestnut Parkway. It's 8.256 acres of vacant land. And like I said, the current zoning for it is downtown transitional district, DTD. The intent, this is taken as an excerpt from the property owner during the application, is to take the property back to residential designation so that a single-family house may be built on it. And the applicant is Brian Kinley. As you can see on the map in front of you, highlighted in yellow is the parcel at zero Gribble Road. You can also see just to the northwest of the property is the future Chestnut Parkway that's shaded in orange. And you can see that, not on this map, but just to the north of this excerpt, is part of the Chestnut Parkway that's already being cleared to the right of Town Hall. And so that project's currently underway. Here's the street view, looking at the front of the property from Gribble Road. This is looking to the southeast on Gribble Road. The subject property is going to be on the left-hand side. This is looking opposite way towards the northwest on Gribble Road. And you can see the subject property on the right side. Across the street is 401 Gribble Road. This property was, the home was built back in 1960. It's 18 acres. And to the far right of it, you'll be able to see what will eventually be the future Chestnut Parkway. This property was rezoned prior to the downtown master plan being approved in November of 2023. And it was rezoned to light industrial. Since then, with the downtown plan being approved, it was rezoned to DTD, even though there's a single-family home on it. Adjacent to this property on the north side is a vacant residential property built back in 1967. It's just shy of an acre. And to the left of it on the north side is where the future Chestnut Parkway is going to go through. And they've already cleared land there as well. Here's the current zoning map. This is in effect after the downtown master plan that was approved in November of 2023. You can see on the legend that the pinkish-red color to the bottom right is DCD, which is the downtown core district. All of the blue is going to be your DTD, which is your downtown transitional district. And then those in the orange are going to be DTDR, which is your downtown transitional residential district. And then further north on Gribble, outside of the downtown area, you have some light industrial and heavy industrial. Future land use map shows pretty much everything that was in the downtown core and downtown transitional area. Future land use recommendations were mixed use. And then you see some industrial outside of the downtown area that was recently approved. And you can see there as well where the Chestnut Parkway is starting to go through just to the northwest of it. The downtown master plan recommendation map, this is pulled straight from the report, and then I added the subject property just so you could see it in relation. You can see the green outline towards Indian Trail Road South and the railroad tracks. All of that was originally proposed as the downtown core district, and that remained in place as part of the rezoning approval. And then the proposed downtown transitional area is a combination of both the DTD, which is the downtown transitional district, as well as the DTDR, which is the downtown transitional residential district. Before the plan was approved by council, it originally recommended just two districts, both the core and the transitional. But due to tax implications that staff later found out about with Union County Tax Assessor's Office and the impact that that would have on some residents in the transitional district, there was later a third zoning district added, just four properties that had residential structures on them. So anything that was vacant or already zoned for commercial or industrial in those transitional areas stayed DTD. Analysis and details, to the northeast and to the northwest, both of those are still zoned as DTD, and they're vacant. There's also the abandoned single-family home that was zoned as DTDR, and that was strictly because there was a residential structure on it at the time. To the southeast, properties are zoned DTDR. Those are the single-family homes along Navajo Trail. There were three smaller vacant properties that were located along Navajo Trail that, as we were going through the master plan process for downtown, were originally recommended as the just transitional district. But after concern by council and others and the residential makeup of Navajo Trail, it was later revised to change those three parcels to residential district. To the southwest is also DTD. There's a single-family home. This is the one that I was talking about earlier. Prior to the downtown master plan adoption and rezoning, the property was rezoned to light industrial, and it's currently going through a site plan. For the comprehensive plan, the downtown village plan from the 2041 comp plan has been replaced by the recommendations and the approval of the new downtown master plan, which was done back in November of 2023. And like I said, from the previous map, the future land use recommends mixed use as the appropriate land use. Continuing with the comprehensive plan, and this is pulled as an excerpt from the approved downtown master plan, that the existing residential development and vacant land located through Indian Trail's downtown is to be shifted over the course of time to a secondary tier of medium to high-density mixed uses to bridge downtown to the surrounding suburban environment, which would be more of your neighborhoods. And per our current UDO regulations, we have to give explanations and definitions for each district. And so this is pulled straight from our Unified Development Ordinance. The downtown transitional district is intended to implement the policies of the town's downtown master plan that calls for a mix of uses, transitioning from the outside downtown through the downtown core district. The mix of uses includes multifamily residential, single-family attached residential, commercial office, retail, and personal services. In summary, the requested zoning is for DTDR, which is the residential district. Properties zoned as DTD, which is what this currently is. As part of the downtown master plan, were not intended for single-family residential detached homes. The comp plan anticipates that development of single-family attached, which would be townhomes, commercial, office, retail, and personal services. The requested action before you today is either a motion to approve the zoning map amendment as presented, or a motion to deny the zoning map amendment as presented. Staff is of the opinion that the request is not consistent with the recommendations of the downtown master plan, but that will be up to y'all to decide. Thank you.
Okay. So basically, the downtown master plan that now exists would see this area as more of a, more densely populated because it would be attached homes as opposed to individual?
Correct. And even the 2041 plan that was previously approved in, I believe, July of '21, still called, at that time, for medium-density residential at a minimum in the area, which is typically two to four density units per acre, which can get up to our current zoning of around SF4.
So before this became the DTD or DTR, before this, this property was previously zoned light industrial?
No, no. Across the street was rezoned as light industrial. This one was still zoned SF1, which is single-family low-density.
Are there any other questions from the board?
Just want, would you mind going back? I think there was the second. Yeah, go forward again. I think you showed a house that was currently there, or that's currently there, not that one.
So this is just to the north of the property in question. It was designated originally as DTDR because of the structure on it. Otherwise, it would have, if it was vacant, it would have been zoned as DTD as well. So in terms of.
It's vacant now, though.
It has been vacated. There's still technically the house on it, but it's been abandoned. So if you look at the zoning map on the screen, it's going to be, this one in orange. If you see up here, it's going to be this one.
So, and I know this is subjective. When the Chestnut Parkway is completed, the impact of that corridor completion is going to impact all of these properties to a degree, correct?
We believe so. Essentially, part of the Chestnut Parkway is supposed to alleviate traffic off of Indian Trail Road to that Chestnut Parkway. And as part of that, then the Indian Trail Complete Street project will continue, and that's going to change the streetscape to allow sidewalks, street tree plantings, and everything else that's going on, that's being facilitated by public work, or not public works, engineering, excuse me.
And possibly higher-density development.
Correct.
Just wanted to clarify, and I think you may have said it. So if this went through with this zoning change, what would that allow them to do that is opposed to your recommendation?
If it was approved as presented, which would change the zoning from transitional district to transitional residential, they would just be allowed to put home on it, which is what they are stating their intent is. They wouldn't be able to do commercial or anything like that.
You mentioned a home. Was that, or that could be 25 homes. Is that correct?
I'd have to go through and look at what the requirements are for the downtown transitional residential district are. Typically, you have a minimum lot size that's required as part of it. So it would be SF5, 8,000 square feet. That's the equivalent of it. So you think like a Bonterra subdivision would be the equivalent size of lots that they can do. In that case, 8,000 square foot is about five units per acre, just over it.
Okay. Well, you mentioned a couple times a house, and that's why I was wanting to clarify.
Yeah, no. Their intent is a house. They could technically go through and subdivide it, build the roads to the certain standard, and as long as the homes meet the required minimum lot size, frontage, and other things specified in the UDO, yes, they could technically buy right subdivision.
So in regards to the question I asked, and they could build on an 8,000 square foot?
Correct.
With that new change?
Yes. If it was DTDR, then they theoretically could develop multiple homes.
Okay. Jennifer, are there public comments?
There are no public comments at this time unless the applicant would like to come up and speak.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Sure. Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Brian Kinley, I live on Navajo Trail. This is my property. And like the gentleman said, the intention of this was to build a home. We live on Navajo. We're kind of outgrowing that with a couple of kids. As things are going now, I don't know that's going to happen. So one of the biggest things I want to achieve with this is not having to pay higher taxes until whatever comes where it can be developed. I'm kind of different from most folks. I didn't buy property intent to flip it, sell it, develop it. I've here to hear my whole life. Five generations have lived here. I'm not a fan of apartments, not a fan of huge growth. So that's not my intention. My intention is not having to pay high taxes until it gets to the point it's unbearable to live here. In that case, it can be sold. I keep hearing about sewer coming. Eight years down the road, 20 years down the road, it's a fully developed out. I personally don't want to pay any higher taxes than I have to because not just this property, two other properties I have are being affected by this. And it's unfortunate. So this is why I talked to Ms. Deese, a couple of options. With the plan, there wasn't a lot of time to where I could kind of combine properties. I went through the surveying route, and with the prices in the time crunch, I couldn't make it happen to where I could combine that with my other land. So she recommended going with the rezoning to council. And we tried to do this before the plan got adopted. Obviously, that didn't happen, so here we are. So that's only my goal, is to not have to pay higher taxes than I have to for as long as I have to. So I'd be glad to feel any questions you may have, but that's the down and dirt. There's no ulterior motive. I'm not sitting here and, you know, someone's in my pocket wanting to develop this and put a bunch of houses. Trust me, I'm 100% against that. So that's not what's, what my goal is for this.
Now, I appreciate you being straightforward in that, what the reasons were. Because it's kind of what I thought, but I appreciate you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's, like I said, it's been in my house, and I have a place for the kids. And long-term, this is where we would like to stay. Things are going a little differently than what I anticipated. So we may have set up camp elsewhere, which is unfortunate. But until then, again, I don't want to pay these high taxes.
What is the difference between that when it comes down to tax-wise? Do we know?
That would be more for Union County Tax Assessor's Office. Most of the time, it's not always for the highest and best use as much as it is what the current use is. So when planning staff heard, as we were going through the downtown master plan process, that the tax implications were going to increase, that's why we had to work with council and the consultant to pivot in that moment for properties that actually had homes on them. It was a pretty straightforward, strict criteria that, hey, all these properties that are being proposed just as DTD, if they have a single-family home on them or a structure, then we're going to convert them to the transitional residential district. The only three exceptions outside of that rule were the three vacant properties along Navajo Trail because even though it's not a quote-unquote "platted, established subdivision" like you would see with some of the other new developments that have occurred, it's still residential in nature. But as far as how much this is going to increase one way or another, that would be Union County, unfortunately.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Are we ready to take a vote? I'll entertain a motion, one or the other.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that it be approved.
Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. It does not carry. Okay. So then our next project is, let's see, I'm looking for a number here. CZ 2012-0001M Trail Miniature Golf, CZ modification.
Let me get my microphone closer to me. Thank you. As mentioned, this is CZ 2012, excuse me, I'm going to get used to this mic, -0001M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf Modification. The zoning request is to modify the existing conditional plan that was put into place back in 2012. The base zoning, this request will not change the base zoning. And can, are you carrying me okay? Okay. Okay. I can't tell if it's carrying or not. The intent is to allow recently constructed unpermitted metal building, which is 1,206 square feet, and a concrete pad to remain and be used for recreational uses allowed under the GBD on the property. The applicant is Trails Golf LLC. On the GIS, it shows it as Baden Ventures LLC. The contact is Scott Merritt. You see on this, the aerial view, the location beside Union Prep Academy on Younts Road. Here's the current zoning map. And the current zoning is CZ CBD. As mentioned, it has conditional zoning on the property. The future land use shows this property as low-density residential. So as the analysis, analysis and overview, the original approval in general was to establish the front primary frontier-style building, have miniature golf course, and the parking area. That's in general. The process that began with discovering the metal structure, there was a violation letter issued back April 19th, 2023, that went through several points that started things off, mentioning a permit to be required, talked about building materials, standards for facades, especially facades from streets visible, and then items related to what a building's impact would be on flood control once you add a structure, and making sure that's in line with stormwater design manual. The following are some images. This is the street view looking southeast down Younts Road with the subject property on the left and the structure. This is looking the other way northwest up Younts Road with the subject property on the right. And this is a closer look across Younts Road at the structure. This is a look almost in front of the main store, frontier store there, across the parking lot to the side of the building and showing a little bit of what the entrance would be for those going into the structure. And here's a view from the larger parking lot, looking straight into Younts Road. There's also some pictures in here with, even the original approval talked about stormwater issues along Younts Road. So I took some photos of some of the drainage area right in front of, in front of the building across the sidewalk, between the sidewalk and Younts Road. There's also a couple pictures of the main parking lot. The one on the left shows some sediment in the curb and gutter area that's built up as looking towards Younts Road in the corner of the subject building. in the corner of the subject building. The one on the right shows some of the issues that have formed between the parking lot and the detention pond there that flows, and it's built to flow some into the parking lot when it overflows. But that day, it was, shows some of the moss and sediment buildup there. So, here's an aerial photo timeline on the evolution of some of the things going on. Here's an overall map that shows 2015, 2019, and 2021. The subject property is in this bottom left-hand corner here. You can see some of the trees earlier when the project first got established. There was still some good canopy cover there, and then I have some blowups, as seen here, for the same time periods. So, in 2015, there was still canopy cover. The canopy cover began to go away in 2019, and then the concrete pad showed up in 2021, and the top of the, we don't have an aerial of the metal structure. That aerial photography was not available. So, going over project elements, this conditional study was to, is to modify the old conditional approval, so that things will come into compliance. And after the violation letter was sent back in '23, before we got to this point, for the conditional zoning request, staff began to speak with the property owner on ways to seek compliance. Property owner was resistant to the process in providing full study that was requested and revisions needed. The property owner next submitted for this conditional modification, but was resistant to providing what was needed to meet requirements before it moved forward.
Excuse me. This, I'm the property owner, I don't know how this...
There will be time for public comments. This is not it. Please sit down.
You need to stop lying, okay? We're telling the truth here.
There will be time for you to speak.
You're out of order. You're out of order.
Please sit down now. There will be time for you. Thank you.
Okay, here's the current request, and there'll be a comparison here in a moment with the pad and structure in that corner. Here's the original approval with that area as a tree save. And then here's the two side-by-side, showing the limits of the trees to be protected in that corner, and then the new structure request on the right side. Here was the first version of an attempt to get the structure to blend into the surroundings. We spoke with the property owner and spoke about how, you know, it may not be possible to have it blend in with the frontier-style building, but it was his choice to move forward with a concept or not. But I told him it may not work out, and that's the other side of the building. Okay, so here are some elements that were found not to be compliant. There's several points here from the ordinance. The ordinance allowed one building, describes uses within the development, miniature golf, recreation use. Adding a metal building to allow indoor recreation use is what the request is. The pro is additional recreation use, that's a pro. The con is, you know, trees lost and the plan not being followed. Ordinance condition seven, improvements on Younts Road frontage, including street trees and any additional improvements required by the town or NCDOT. And the request is to add the structure, but the con is the town requested engineering study of stormwater, which was not performed. The ordinance seven, alternative designs to handle existing drainage challenges with Younts Road. Applicant responded, we will submit once the plan's approved. Town requested engineering study of stormwater is not performed. The findings could have impacted this approval consideration if they were fully performed, as the engineer asked. Ordinance condition nine, removal of heritage or required tree areas must be mitigated. Applicant said trees were in bad health and in the tree save, were bad health in the tree save area, and if mitigated, they could plant elsewhere. But the con is if trees in a tree save area are in bad health, town staff should be contacted so that a professional can assess it and they be replaced. Leaving a tree save area does not benefit the development. In this case, the tree save area does provide a front buffer from the parking lot and detention pond behind it. Another ordinance condition from the approved ordinance, site shall be developed as generally depicted on the concept plan, and so the request is for the new structure. An additional building, the con is the additional building built without consulting town staff, without a permit, and without revising the original approval, so it makes compliance difficult. Town planning review comment four, structure is not in a good location for the overall plan and has a negative impact on the view from the property on Younts Road. Applicant responded that they are not finished with the design and it will comply after this is approved. The first attempt, and this is negative, is the first attempt by the applicant to comply with the design regulations, did not produce a design close to a comparison to the primary structure. Staff advised from the beginning, like I mentioned a moment ago, that the architectural attempts may not be enough. Town planning review comments five, the elevation design is not complementary to the existing primary structure on the property. The building does not promote quality aesthetically pleasing development. Applicant responded, the same thing. It'll be done later. The negative is the same one I mentioned before. Town comment number six, sheet metal wall material is not approved, but the sides with the sheet metal is visible from the street, and same comments, it's to be done later after the approval. Town planning review comment seven, building design standards for all facades and exterior, walls that are visible from adjoining streets, that's in our UDO. Several points mentioned there about that section from the UDO, and it was mentioned, again, it'll be done later after the approval. On our comment number eight, the use of axe-throwing is a good fit for the recreation area, as long as the facility receives town council approval and meets all Union County requirements, especially for safety. The use is somewhat a departure from the original direction of recreation for the entire family, down to very small children, as an expansion of the mini-golf area was originally mentioned. Applicant responded that the building will be used for recreation use, which may or may not include axe-throwing, and that's a pro. You know, if everything meets safety conditions and the building's approved, it's great to have another recreation amenity. The con is, new building is not an acceptable location and installed with no review for a permit. Town engineering review comment number two, it appears the intent of the design is to carry roof drain runoff into a pipe system and through the existing curb in the parking lot area. That being the case, hydraulic cals verifying the size of pipe coming off the building can handle total roof area runoff. So, applicant responded, they will submit all that once this is approved. The negative is, repeated requests for this engineering work has been met with resistance. Engineering staff prefer to have the results of such information upfront before we go into a planning board meeting like this and it moves further. Town engineering review comment number three, due to redevelopment occurring on an existing site, an updated stormwater calculations report will be submitted with the site plan for review and approval. Again, applicants said they will do it afterwards, and the same comment, staff, you know, engineering wants to have this information upfront, so not provided. So, here's a compatibility, images, compatibility with the surrounding area. You see a home just past the main store. You see the Trails Dynasty frontier-like store there, which has a nice appeal to it, and then Union Prep beside it, and this metal structure's just is not a compatible structure. So, action required, required consistency findings. The proposed constructed structure does not meet the required consistency findings and is not in the public interest due to location, tree save, lack of stormwater engineering, and other points made in the staff report. If the planning board or town council believes this project does meet the required consistency findings and is in the public interest, they must state those details that are part of their determination. Staff's recommendation, a lot of this is, was already mentioned in those other slides in that table, but staff does not recommend this request due to not being in compliance with the structure, the concrete pad need to be removed, tree save area replanted, mitigated, and if constructing a structure elsewhere on the site, site plans must be submitted with the location to the rear of the property where original expansion was planned previously. Requests being made after site, concrete pad structure constructed without modification to a conditional zoning approval, tree save area was demolished or allowed to diminish without evaluation and required replacement in the same area. Aesthetics of new structure is not complementary of other structures, as shown in the previous photographs. Refusal to comply with multiple requests to provide new engineering study of stormwater impacts and other elements listed in that table I was talking about. So, the requested action is a decision. The motion is put forth first to recommend denial or to recommend approval. If, motion to recommend denial of the conditional zoning modification request, CZ 2012-0001M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf CZ modification as presented based on the request not meeting the consistency findings, not being in the public interest as read by staff, or a motion to recommend approval of the conditional zoning modification request, CZ 2012-0001M Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf Modification, with the following, planning boards required consistency findings and why it is in the public interest, and that would be inserted there.
Okay, are there questions from the board to the planning department? Ken, questions? David?
So, from staff, the preference would have been that, hey, evidence that this is going, that it's going to meet the requested compliance, correct?
What was that again? Sorry.
So, from staff, have been preferable for these requirements, the things that, to bring it into compliance, that there'd been some evidence of plans being made, those...
Yeah, yeah. You know, as we provided information on how to come into compliance, but it, from the beginning, it looked like it was going to, the structure was going to need to be moved, and in order to add, you know, one more chance to, you know, make the building look similar to something that would fit, you know, in comparison with the frontier building that's there, that was kind of a, you know, a last effort to make that comply. But it's, it looks like it's going to take a way more investment to make it, to make it fit into the area.
So, on the timeline, there's various steps here, that there was the putting down of a pad, elimination of the tree canopy, and then building of the buildings. Was all that done before there was any contact with the planning department, or was there some kind of original permit?
Yeah, that was done in, you know, we discovered it in last year, by 2023, and the pad in those photos showed up in '21, I think.
You said you discovered it, so there was no, there was no approach to the planning department about doing those things?
There was no discovery, there was no establishment of the violation until it was issued in 2023.
Tim's referring to, once we were made aware of the issue in May of 2023, that's when we started doing research on, okay, how did this happen, and that's when we were able to piece together the aerials from 2021. So, we went back to the GIS aerials. So, we were not aware of it in 2021, but upon research, we realized that's when, when some of the things had happened.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to establish. So, a pad was put down, but...
Right. We were not, we were not, we were not made aware and did not receive a complaint until May of 2023, and then that's when we contacted the owner.
So, a complaint was received?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, prior to public comments, I need to read the process. For those in attendance tonight, I would like to share with you the rules of decorum and what to expect as it relates to the public comment period. We appreciate your interest in communicating with this board. Please know this planning board is a recommending body to the town council. This board does not make final decisions, simply recommendations to town council. This meeting, as well as the public comments, are recorded and can be heard on YouTube. Please note the following rules when addressing this board. Each speaker has three minutes to address the board. We have a clock with warnings to help you track the time. Please elect one speaker for the groups of people with the same message. Comments should be directed to all board members and not specific individuals or to the audience. Speakers are to remain respectful with reasonable standards of civility. As chair, I may stop the speaker from continuing if rules are violated. We ask the audience to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public hearing. Jennifer, would you list the persons coming up?
Yes, ma'am. We do have the applicant signed up to speak. He is the first speaker, Mr. Scott Merritt.
Okay. Please come to the podium.
My name is Scott Merritt. I own Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf.
Could you speak up a little bit?
Let me just fix this. My name is Scott Merritt. I own Trails Dynasty Miniature Golf. For one, on this project, I think we got an issue with bad communication, being the whole process that we've gone through. And look, I already know what your guys are going to vote, I already know that, but I'm trying to help the town out, okay? And that's what we're about. We own a putt-putt miniature golf ice cream parlor. We own a putt-putt miniature golf ice cream parlor. We built this thing 10 years ago because the Lord laid it on my heart five years before that, to bring families together. Back then, there was a lot of crime going on, and still a lot of crime going on. So I digress. We go forward. So in that process, we realized that we're reaching families. We had kids, churches come there, the putt-putt, you know, and have shut-ins and Bible studies, kids get saved on that fireplace, great, Lord's blessing blessed. So in that process, we realized that we're not reaching younger adults, 20 and a little bit older. So in that process, we tried to come up with an axe throwing, right? So we, we did that, we came with axe throwing, that's, that's the idea. We put the pad in, getting to the point about their comments about, we didn't know anything about that concrete pad, I beg to differ. You want to know why? Because they had a teen building out there and had picnic tables out there, and that's where they had their picnic at, at my Trails Dynasty, when the concrete pad was there. So I don't know, maybe they didn't come, I don't know, but I know the staff came, a bunch of the staff came, but, so they did know. The lies that he's been telling, Tim Jones has been telling, he's been leading this whole deal the whole time, not only with you guys.
Remember, direct the comments to you, to the board and not to an individual person.
But he spoke about me, so I don't get to retaliate against that?
Nope.
I don't. Well, that's wrong in a lot of ways, but I digress. He said that we haven't been communicating with emails, so we printed out a bunch of emails, he communicated with this town manager. So we printed them all out, that thick. Todd Barber has them now, okay, to state my point. All the things he was talking about, you know, we didn't have those conversations, he didn't have the, we didn't have the conversation about the look of the building, the, you know, the brick front, he didn't make a comment about, well, it doesn't fit with the other, you know, the other, I mean, and it's just the color, you know, we can change the color, we can put stone, I even said that we'll put stone, possibly brick on it. We haven't made up our mind, we just need to get something out there pretty quick. With the stormwater problem, we've got a engineer stamped seal when we built Trails Dynasty, it also, because we were going to expand, that it also can hold another 3,200 square foot building, water, signed, the roads control specialist from the previous project, from Trails Dynasty, that pond can hold that much. So let me put it in context with you guys. Okay, so Dennis Moser has that big project out there with the theaters, what was it called, Sun Valley Commons, right? He's got all those commercial buildings that he built in sections and years, that would ask you to go get him to get another permit, get another engineer to look at that pond to make sure, no, you wouldn't do that because he had planned for that, and we did too, we planned for that. So when they requested an engineer to go back and reevaluate that, I'm thinking, well, that's a waste of my money, you don't ask other developers to do that, I'm a small-time guy, it's, we're mom and pop, it's me and my wife, Amy, right? And we try to do the best what God gives us, and we are locals, local people who try to make a difference in our community, and we are making a difference. Now it's time for you guys to knock back on what somebody thinks or gets mad about because I didn't go through the right process, I admit, I made a mistake, I did, I made a mistake, and now we're here trying to rectify it, and it's easy to rectify. We know the steps we got to go through, we got to put a face on it, we got to plant more trees, and the trees that fell down in the storms in those processes of time, that's what's happened. And so, and then we had a guy, and I've got a letter from him, he came out, looked at them, said, "Those are dead, those are dead," and I said, "Well, let's cut them down," because we had one tree fall in the parking lot, and this is how God works. It fell in the parking lot, right in between two cars. I looked at that and I was like, wow, God, you're giving me a sign, I need to get these trees out of here, I need to have somebody come and look at them, you know, but it fell right in between them. So there you go, but listen, I know you guys are going to vote no, and I, I get it, I get it, you have to think of what the planners think, because, and that happens, I get that. So only thing I'm up here saying is, is that you've got planners that aren't doing the right thing, they're not, they're not out of the community, they've got a book, and in the UDO, is there not somewhere in there that I can build a secondary building in the UDO? Let me ask you that question. In the UDO, can I not, there's not written in there that I can build a secondary building as long as it's not like 60% over the size of the other one?
You can direct your questions to the board and they can decide if they want to ask me those questions.
Could you ask him that question, because we may be going through this for no reason.
I think we need to keep to the topic.
We are, because it's the building, and it's only 1,200 square feet, and my existing building is 2,100 square feet, so I'm in that 60 percentile. So if I can build a secondary building in a 60%, I'm golden.
So I don't think that this process, this, what is up for approval, has anything to do with a secondary building?
Yes, it's a secondary building, that, that's what it's submitted, it's a secondary building. It's not submitted as a, it's a secondary building, that's how we submitted our, our, yeah, rezoning.
Can you clarify?
Sure, I'll be glad to. So commercial properties are allowed to have secondary buildings. Mr. Merritt actually received previous approval for a bakery that he had planned, and that building was in a more appropriate place, so it's not that he can't have a secondary building. This building is in front of the primary, it does not meet the design guidelines, it's in the tree save, and we don't have proof that it will drain appropriately, so those are the issues, and I would ask, Mr. Merritt, if you have issues with staff, this is not the forum to take that up in. Thank you.
Well, I think, the reason why I'm thinking, surely I'm not the only one having problems with you guys, but, so there, so all we're looking at is, what she just said, is that, you know, it didn't look good, but we're trying to put that, because you've got a lot of metal buildings that's going up, I mean, you look, and they're just putting faces on them, so there's not the issue, we can put the face on it. Drainage, we've already got a letter stated from an engineer, which I gave to our engineer, and he sees that, and we've already got elevations done, which I sent to the engineer and our design guys, and they said, yeah, it's going to drain, and that's in there, and if you don't have that, I've got a copy of that, which I don't even know if you showed that one to them, but anyway, let me, so, but we have copies of that, so, I mean, but look, here's the deal, I know you guys are going to vote no, so have at it, but I'm just saying, we're here for the community, and the community needs something, especially the young adults, and that's what we're here for, and that's what we're trying to provide. Families love our facility, they love it, we petitioned for this thing, we had, I don't know, 13,000 people come in and say, yeah, we want this axe throwing, right when this guy here was giving us a hard time and saying that we weren't communicating, and we were, we were communicating with, with the engineers and with him and everything, and I've got emails stating, so I wish you guys would just say, hey, let me see all them emails, I would send them to you, even though it's not going to change your vote, but.
Okay, thank you. We didn't time this, did we, Jennifer?
Because he's the applicant, he doesn't have to stick to three minutes.
Okay, then we need to change what we read before the public comments then. Okay, thank you very much for the comments, we appreciate that.
Any questions for me?
The permit process, you admit you did not follow that process?
We did, we found out later that we did not, we not follow, we were thought, we were, we were zone commercial, and we thought that with our secondary building, that we're okay because we knew the standard for that, and then we didn't know we had to go through another rezoning, and as soon as we did, here's the deal, we met with them, and they said, you know, don't, you might want to stop, don't build anymore on it, so we did, so we stopped, and we didn't add to it. Now, this has been a year, it's been since last April, so we haven't done anything to it since last April. Now, I put a ladder in there one time when I was changing the light because I didn't want to leave it outside, but now that ladder's out, but we haven't even set foot in that place since then. So we, we follow rules, don't get me wrong, we're a rule follower, and we have nothing against anybody, we don't, we love, we love y'all, you know, come on out, we'll show you love, that's what we're about. I mean, it got me upset because he was lying, it was, when we first came up?
I think that's enough.
And he was saying all that stuff?
Mr. Sandy, did you have a question?
It just got me.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I'd like to make a motion that this recommendation be postponed for a month until, let both parties get together and try to resolve their issues before you can bring it back to us next month.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and I have a vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the, the proposal is tabled for a month, and, and the board encourages everybody to talk together. Okay, and now for the fun part, the UDO.
Are we past, could I ask one more question of our staff?
Oh, sure, absolutely, go ahead.
Could this be conditionally approved with stipulations that were required to be complied
Are you talking about from staff's point of view?
From, I guess, yeah, from whoever, from the board.
We, we did not receive everything that was requested before site plan review would occur, and so that's why we are recommending to not approve.
Okay.
And I think it's important, important to say that I don't think it's fair to us to assume we're going to vote one way or another, because we're trying to serve the community as well, and we want to see our local businesses flourish and expand and, and do well. There are, there are protocols in place, there's, there's things that, and we understand that, and so the hope is, and the reason I voted to, you know, to table this, is to hopefully, but, all right, get some more evidence that, hey, we're going to make sure this, we can meet those things, all right, because it seems to be some, obviously miscommunication or misunderstandings, so it's an opportunity for, for that to get cleared and everybody can work together, because I would, I can't speak for staff, but I, but I think everybody wants to see you, you flourish, and, and that you're able to expand your business and continue to reach more people, so.
That's what we want.
And so here's the opportunity, so I hope you take that opportunity to, you know, to do your best to, so we can come to a resolution so everybody can move forward.
Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Fielding? Ms. Fielding over here. I do have two other speakers that did sign up to speak.
Okay.
Would you allow them to speak?
Uh, yes, why not?
Okay. I do have the next resident, Mark Howell.
I didn't find him.
That leaves Mr. Michael Falkenberry.
It's a very complicated situation, by the way, Michael Falkenberry, live next to the theater complex. Okay, no problem. I wish you'd be loud enough, it shouldn't matter. Thank you, policeman. I'm all for having a business expanded, provided it's done properly, okay? The issue here, and he's already had admission, it involved through correctly. To me, give the person an opportunity to clean the slate, start all over again, okay? Miscommunication, I have those emails he's referring to, I have them. However, in those emails, it doesn't specify both sides, okay, of the situation. I've also researched on the county level, I haven't seen any permitting, don't know why, maybe holding off until what happens here, but for the purpose of the building for axe throwing, I mean, I'm not getting off subject here, next to a school, I don't think it's very, not good logic there. It's like putting a gun shop next to a bank, okay? There's other venues to be used there, cornhole, horseshoes or rubber horseshoes, I think it'd be a good, good fit, but I think if you have the right idea to postpone this, get communication between the two together, might have to have a mediator, evidently there's some emotions going on here, you probably need to have somebody else involved in this. But I do believe his intent is, is from the heart, I do believe so, but however, if it's not going properly, then it needs to be addressed. Where was the ball dropped? Who dropped it? Okay, well, as you said, I wish him the best, and I hope something can be resolved with all this. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else for this issue?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
Now, to continue from our previous meetings, ZT 2022-0075 UDO amendments. We've gone through most of this presentation, but there are a few additions, but the purpose was to amend the Unified Development Ordinance, its intent to incorporate changes from the comp plan, incorporate some new statute requirements, clarify language, and add various new code Here is the index of categories that the changes were, were put into in the staff report, and that's the first page, second page, but these are, can be grouped into different kinds of revisions. There's more of the minor revisions, changes from the last comprehensive plan update adoption, additions needed for minor code changes, grading only permit requirements, clarification of existing language or section intent. Now, there's other revisions that are more involved in this, okay, I'm done. Revisions that are more involved, and I'll just skirt through these because some of these we've already gone through, but removing some overlays that either are not really used in the past or are just better to be found under conditional zoning, district that they pertain to, removing references to overlays being overlay districts, there's one, overnight stays at gas stations, we've, a lot of these are related to situations that have come up over the past couple of years, so this limits that to just one night. Accessory retail sales, this, these are businesses, commercial businesses that want to add an accessory retail use, like a gas station that wants to add a large, like vape component would be an example, just some other side use, that's not the primary use. Vehicle sales and rental lots, currently it's two acres, this would make it two acres for Highway 74 in Old Monroe, and five acres for all other roadways. Others, single families must provide an additional space after the first three bedrooms for parking, in addition to the two spaces, garages do not count as parking spaces, an additional sign for multifamily and subdivisions, building line formalization, this is where you have infill development within existing neighborhoods, and you want the new home that's being built to line up with the front, frontage of the other homes, so you're not blocking or it's not placed back too far. Lot coverage, there's now percentages that should not be exceeded for lot coverage in order to protect the, you know, stormwater studies that have already occurred in a development. Electric car charging stations, this is not to require charging stations in any way, this is only to respond to, I've had about three requests and, in the last couple of years, and I needed to have, it'd be nice to have a little more leverage to say, you know, please screen the big gigantic green transformers and computer boxes that come along with them, and provide ADA where, where it's needed. Conversion of certain architectural requirements, some of, we're restricted on a couple of the requirements on, on homes, and so this is to keep those elements that, that help us and just recommend them for conditional zonings. Adding more detail to open space requirements for attached multifamily. Adding more detail to open space requirements for attached multifamily residential developments. Dwelling parking space requirements, dwelling parking space is your parking space concrete right in front of your garage door. And, and then a little detail to make this jive with what the engineer guidance has, the width, standardizing the width for single lane and double lane, and no other items other than what we define as a general vehicle can park in the, those parking spaces in front of the house. Add florist to the retail category, and let's see, minimal regulations for accessory use, short-term rental. Flex space has been a real high demand lately, so we want to help define the different types we found in those. Alley requirements, it's an option to a point, but required when it exceeds the lots that are a certain size. Distance requirements standardized for electronic gaming, body piercing, tattooing, tobacco vape operations. Accessory structure, maximum size and quantity revisions. There's been some revisions after the last meeting, prior to November, just before that meeting, these were some of the, the changes that we made, and this was in this presentation the last time. But since then, we've had a couple others since November, and the packets showed those revisions in green, under the report in those sections, GH, SV, and VV. Section G, a new revision to note, due to something a new board member brought to our We want to add a clarification note that temporary family housing and healthcare structures must be to state building code and GS 143, 139, 1B. I looked that up in the statute, and so it would not apply to RVs, and that's what we wanted to clarify. So, the requested action that still stands is to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment request, ZT 2022-0075, as presented, or to deny.
Are there questions from the board?
Just, the florist thing is interesting, so when the plan was originally developed, how was that retail list developed and the florists weren't on it? And are there any other after, or how did that come up to be put on?
Yeah, the, the list was existing when I came here five years ago, this month. So it's been tweaked along the way as, as certain uses help to add to. But with the florist, one of the things that we've experienced is trying to define between, you know, what's a nursery, what has outdoor sta, sales, outdoor storage areas, and we wanted something that defined florist as an indoor store, no outdoor sales, retail only.
I'm good, I've been through.
You hear the motion?
I can't make a motion.
I'm motion, I'm, I'm, I'm motion. Motion to recommend approval of the zoning text amendment request, ZT 2022-0075, UDO amendments, as presented. Second?
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. All those in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Thank you.
Go back to my agenda. Okay, is there any other business we need to discuss tonight? Nope, there being no other business, I declare the meeting closed. Thank you all for your service.